Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Better City Planning Commission. This is Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, six thirty P M. Call meeting for first order of business is the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If there's one on the stand. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Secretary take your roll call, please.
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Staff members here.
Commissioner Turnbull, here. Commissioner Walz. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Okay, I need approval of the agenda. Someone can make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Take your roll, please.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next is approval of amendments from the regular meeting of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve the amendments from the April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Second.
Motion made and supported, any comments or corrections? Take your roll, please.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Public comment on non-agenda items only. Saying not, we can move on to business items, we have none. Other business and discussion. This item is zoning ordinance amendments, discussion of potential zoning amendments to consider in the future. Mr. Ropega, you want to start us off here?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take the opportunity to have a brief discussion with you on some potential future zoning ordinance amendments. You know, in the past, we've kind of done our amendments based on some pressing new uses coming that would be coming into the city or making some corrections to the ordinances that we currently have in terms of typos or updating them to modern standards. Now, we're at the point where there are some other issues still left to be considered, some from the master plan, some from other issues that we've seen during our permitting and enforcement with the building department. But I wanted your input on these particular ones that are in front of us, whether you feel which ones are priority, which ones maybe should be considered or not considered, and then also any other input you might have on any other issues that you want to address. So, real briefly, the five in front of you, from the master plan, the whole idea within the master plan was at one point eliminating the O one district because it's kind of restrictive, and at the same time create a mixed use district to allow businesses and property owners the ability to have more range of uses that could be located on certain sites. I've noticed that some of the variance standards of approval and the special use standards of approval, they're pretty extensive and some of them overlap each other when it comes to within the variance or within the special use. So refining them and making them more concise, I think, might help address the approval of those applications. One issue that has been noticed throughout the single-family neighborhoods of the city is extensive paving over of front yards and of backyards for one reason or another. We do currently have some language addressing that, but we might need to either strengthen that or find a way to also include pervious surface in the lot coverage requirement. Right now, it's not counted in the lot coverage requirement. And then there are some other issues with regards to regulated uses such as massage therapy and cigar and hookah lounges and smoke shops. They, there are specific requirements of the state that define them and regulate them. And I think while we've gone over them a couple of times, I think that might be something to consider to keep everything we have in line with how the state regulates these different uses. And then finally, the lighting ordinance. Two ways of lighting currently in the city affects motorists. I don't know if when you're driving down Ford Road, there are definitely some locations you pass by where the lights are really glaring at you. And then there are some other locations in the city where the lights, like a property looks completely dark, like there's nothing there. So there are different ways to address that. Now, these are just five different topics. Once again, you let us know which are priority, which we shouldn't consider, and anything else.
Okay, well, let's take one at a time. Number one, does anyone have any comments or discussion about this one? I had some feeling about this, and I thought possibly the best way to handle this because we have talked a lot about eliminated. And I thought that maybe the best way to do it would be to combine it with C one and just merge their uses. And then everything would become C one.
Yep.
I thought too with the mixed use, rather than creating mixed use district, which would require a mixed use. If we made that as a more permitted use in C one, we could have it in C one and the CBD, which I believe it is already, as a permitted use. And that, that would allow people to use it or not. We wouldn't be restricting the use of that district to just mixed use, but it would be available to people who wanted to do it. And I, I think the other thing that we need to do is create a definition of mixed use and include it in the ordinance. Because I looked through briefly and I couldn't find a definition in the ordinance about what mixed use is. But I think we should try to keep it simple, whether it's a residence above a commercial building or a mix of different uses next to each other while still probably not allowing traditional apartment style housing as a mixed use.
What, I didn't mean to interrupt. What is the mixed use? Do we have that listed? Smoke shop on Ford Road already. I think we gave him a special use for that apartment above a smoke shop. That was stopped at Ford Road by Harrison, I believe. It was a few years ago, probably six or eight, and I think we gave him a special land use for that. For sale along the same.
Do they have a mixed use there now?
They did. That was what the applicant came in for, and I'm just wondering, are we going to be heading off these things or are we starting?
I mean, it would only, it would only be in the C one district that it would be available.
Right.
That will keep it, I think, out of the more intense commercial districts, which to me would make more sense. I know we have had some, some mixed use in the past, but I'm not sure if we have any now or not.
Right. I'm just wondering, do you think this would be a good way to revitalize some of the areas that aren't being? I mean, it's a weird atmosphere out there right now as far as buildings and people. And like my son hasn't been to work, he works for Ford. He hasn't been to work since last year.
Well, it's true, but I understand the state is going to release companies to go back in person now.
Yeah.
So that.
I'm just, I'm just hoping that we don't get a large glut of vacancies because these buildings are, these companies aren't recovering. And if this mixed use would help us to keep that, that might be something to consider, keep it occupied.
I don't know, have we had much demand for mixed use structures?
There hasn't been much demand per se because it's not something that is permitted. So, a lot of people go with what's listed in their district. There have been a couple requests. The most recent has been in the CBD, which does allow it. And to go back to your question, Eric, the mixed use would be the idea of allowing residential as some component on the site, typically being above commercial.
Right.
Some other alternatives could possibly be, it'd be difficult in some of our lots, but to allow a residential multi-tenant building, like maybe to the rear of a commercial in certain cases. But the idea is, and it's from the master plan, the idea is to allow for more opportunities for development on lots in case of traditional retail isn't as the primary option anymore, you know?
Yeah, I don't believe it's going to be either. I mean, take a walk through Westland Mall, man, that thing is an echo of the ghost.
Yeah, traditional retail, at least in large malls, is really hurting because of, and it doesn't appear to be getting any better.
No, no, it doesn't.
People have become more used to ordering stuff online during the pandemic.
Okay.
And so they continue to do it. I think they're going to continue to do it rather than going to the store for the most part.
And believe it or not, it's actually kind of going back to how development used to be in the city. Because any apartments that we do have, for example, the apartment that you said was above a smoke shop, the couple that we do have currently are long-term rentals that just had existed even prior to going back to just commercial. There's a, there's a salon further down Ford Road closer to Inster that does still have an apartment above them. And that's just because it's been there forever.
Right.
So, this would be the idea of kind of allowing that opportunity for property owners to have more flexibility. Obviously, the ordinance creation would involve, you know, making sure that it's developed in such a way so that the, any residents on the site would be, you know, attractive to the tenant, but also at the same time giving property owners an opportunity to develop their site.
Is there, are we pretty much in agreement on what a definition for mixed use would be?
The only real question I think would be is if you would want to allow them on the ground floor in some capacity. You don't have to, but it does come up from time to time. Maybe I could see, because other communities do allow a portion of the ground floor to be utilized for a tenant, but not having it fronting on the main thoroughfare. So, it wouldn't necessarily have access off of Ford Road, but it could just add their entrance into the rear, into the parking lot. That's an option. Or you could allow them to have like a percentage of their frontage have residence. So, if it's a eighty-foot lot, say, up to forty feet of it could be, you know, ground floor residential, and then the other forty has to be, you know, a commercial leasable space. Those are just different technicalities we can get into later on. But once again, it's just the idea of whether you want to at least discuss it in greater detail later on.
I, I don't know. I would think that the traditional idea of having the residential unit above the commercial unit would fit better of having residential on the ground floor if we're going to have that.
Yep.
I think it's a step in the right direction and just making it available and see what kind of interest there are.
Yeah.
Give these businesses a chance to have more options.
Do you see the idea of integrating it with, with the fee one and being?
Yeah, absolutely. Because the idea could be to, I definitely agree that O one should be combined with the C one. What would happen is any property owned, currently zoned O one would become C one. And then at first, the idea was to create a separate mixed use district. But it does make sense to, rather than classify it as a separate district, just allow that opportunity in the C one. That makes sense.
Yeah, because between O one and C one, that would open up quite a bit of area to mixed use.
Yep.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it sounds agreeable. I think it's worth a shot for sure.
Yeah, I think maybe that's the direction we should go in now for that. Okay. Number two, remove variance standards of approval that overlap each other. Do you have examples of that or?
Yeah, I can show you in a second here. I believe when it comes to the variance standards for approval, we have fourteen. And for example, the thirteenth is impact on adjacent properties, and the fourteenth is relationship to adjacent land uses. You know, neighborhood character is also kind of a similar vein. Preservation of property rights. Well, all that, all that one's related to substantial justice for the property owner, which makes it appropriate. But then we also have a separate substantial justice requirement to consider. Consider public safety and welfare, and at the same time, no safety hazard. So, some of those could be combined just to, this is a thought. It's not anything as a priority.
We could look at, but maybe if you have some more specific recommendations.
Yeah, absolutely. No, yeah, as long as you feel it's something you're worth discussing, then we would just prioritize it in order and then bring it back, bring it back to you so you can review the specifics. This is just about seeing if it's even a good idea to consider.
Actually, I think some of our variant standards are a little broad.
At two, that's a good point.
Anyone else have something about variance standards? No. Okay, number three, lot coverage. I know this, this is an issue when, I know I, I can think of one in particular that's really bad, but I don't know exactly how we would set up limits to, to control it.
We do have some requirements that are in theory supposed to restrict people from overly paving and creating vast seas of parking on their single-family home. But the strongest tool you would have was, would be to include hard surface in the lot coverage requirement. Because currently, it doesn't count. Currently, it's only building surfaces. So, the roofs of the principal structure and the accessory, and the garage, basically, is the only thing that counts towards lot coverage. And as you know, some of our lots are, go very, very deep, especially right around here, you know, the historic garden lots. So, if you included pervious surface, impervious surface in the lot coverage requirement, then that would restrict them in some capacity.
Yeah, but in the larger lots, that would still allow for a lot of coverage.
True, but then you, we could.
We've got a fifty-foot lot that's only a hundred and thirty foot deep, and then we've got an eighty-foot lot that's three hundred feet deep. So, the guy with the big lot's going to be able to cover a heck of a lot of it with concrete.
And so, you could separate that, that percentage requirement based on lot size. So, lots from, you know, five thousand square feet to a certain square footage can have twenty-five percent lot coverage, but then anything over, say, you know, twenty, half an acre can only have ten percent lot coverage or something to that effect. We'd have to look at the numbers and come up with those specifics. But once again, if it's a thing, you think it's an issue we should consider, I, we could do the math.
We should look at just square footage too rather than percentages.
Yeah, yeah.
And whether or not we want to have people paving in front of the residents.
Right. Currently, they're only supposed to pave if, if there's a driveway, if there's a garage, and they're only supposed to pave the driveway going to the garage, and that's it.
Just in front of her.
In front of the garage, and that's all they're supposed to pave. They are allowed to do the half-circle driveway, but in, but they're supposed to have a, a open space between the driveway and the sidewalk or the right-of-way. A lot of times, what happens is they submit an application, it looks like it's in compliance, but then when we go out there, the contractor decides to just pave over everything. So, they say, oh, we're sorry, we decided to pave the whole thing. So, so once again, those are all good ideas, and if you think it's a priority, we can do those, give you alternatives. I like the idea of just maybe just a total square footage allowed, and then also maybe percentage, and we can look at the math. Do a little analysis to see how many big lots we have and how many it would affect.
Yeah, I think that's got to be looked at as far as the impact that it would have. I think that complicates using a percentage to control.
By lot size?
Anybody else have anything on that?
That's a tough, that's a tough cookie, Eric.
Be a lot of math.
And it would be, it wouldn't be easy.
People want to have an extra slab to park their RV next to the garage, and, you know, there's all kinds of things they're going to want to do with that.
And we do require them to part, if they have a recreation, to be able to put it either to the rear. So, you got to think they're going to need that ability to pave it.
Yeah.
But then, yeah, I mean, it would be a complicated issue. We'd have to delve into it. I'd provide you with some, you know, alternatives and look at some case studies maybe in the city. And I've seen some doozies.
I know one house that typically parks fifteen cars in there, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, but you know, like my street, there's, it's like one and a half lanes. So, if you park on the pavement, you're, somebody, somebody goes around you, they're on somebody's lawn to go around you.
Right, yeah.
And, you know.
Yeah, it's tough.
A lot of us have gravel parking in the fronts or side of the corner. So, I got the side gravelled because, you know, we had the car out and you parked it on the street. I got hit in the gravel. So, you know, I mean, I'm off the road and got hit. So, you know, you're, until, until the roads get full with, you know, with curbs and all that. It's really a tough cookie. I would hate to even weigh in on it because, because of my own personal situation, you know?
Yeah, well, a lot of people have need for more than two parking spaces, you know?
Yeah.
No doubt about that. So, it's, I mean, some people are taking advantage of it and others just need a little extra. I don't, I'm not sure how we approach it, but.
Well, that, yeah, well, then, once again, that's something we can present an idea to, and then, you know, we can always discuss it. And if you feel like there's no real good solution, if you like what we have on the current books now, we can, you know, then that's what it is. But it's just, once again, the list is whether to see if you feel it's a priority as well and how you would rank it in terms of the ones you'd like to see first.
Yeah, okay. Okay, for clarifying licensed massage therapy, cigar lounge, smoke shop regulations to be more consistent with state regulations and policy. Are we in conflict with them now or?
It's not so much in conflict, it's just that the state licensing has some good definitions. And our current definitions are a little open-ended. For example, the smoke shop definition specifically talks about tobacco, whereas the vape products are actually regulated just like tobacco products. So, you know, it's not anything that has come up as of yet, but in the past, some zoning administrators in the past would say it's a vape product, technically it doesn't include tobacco, so technically you're not a smoke shop, based on Garden City definitions. My recent stance after doing some more research, I'm using, utilizing the interpretation of the use and definition standard in our ordinance to say that because the state regulates this as a tobacco, as, the same as a tobacco product, if you're just a vape shop, a lot of people say they want to sell hookah, and hookah doesn't include tobacco, or, you know. And then because they say, oh, I'm not going to be a hookah, I'm not a tobacco shop, I'm a hookah shop, so therefore let me in. I'm utilizing the interpretation of the zoning ordinance definitions to hang my hat on the fact that because of the state requirements, you, I'm classifying you as a smoke shop, and therefore you're a regulated use and where you have to be a thousand feet and everything else. I'm confident in that interpretation right now. I think I would, there would be stronger ground to, to be on if we change the, the smoke shop definition to, say, tobacco, vape, and that sort of thing. So, that's one example of that. Similar with cigar lounges. Cigar lounges are interpreted one way, hookah, hookah establishments are interpreted another. Because you can have, so right now, for example, the cigar lounge that's going in on Harrison and Ford is considered a lounge, based on our lounge definition. We don't have any cigar definition, so we just, I just like having a belt and suspender situation when it comes to ordinances so I can be on clear ground and not, and people not, people being argumentative if it comes to my interpretation. If they don't like my interpretation.
Does hookah, where does hookah follow? Does it fall underneath the vape or tobacco? I'm not even.
I honestly, I've spoken to the state health department, which regulates it, and they have a hard time trying to explain to me where it falls in terms of the hours of operation because a lot, and the WIC is the way we define it right now. And it's not so much that whether they're smoking hookah is the issue, it's the ancillary activities. It's the music, it's opening till two A M., it's having a large people and large parking requirements, and that's how we've defined it, and that's how we're trying to, to regulate it.
Okay.
So, for example, if someone had a hookah lounge and they're going to be open from, you know, noon to eight P M., you know, maybe that's, could be accepted because whether they're in the establishment, smoking a cigar or smoking from a hookah.
Right.
You know, that, whether, you know, as long as they're adults, they, they are allowed to do that. However, it's just a matter of where do you find that, where to draw that line? Right now, we've drawn the line where it's being opening too late and it's being more of a lounge slash dance club situation.
Okay.
So, this ordinance would just specifically define cigar lounge, have that specific license requirement, and then allow them in certain areas.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know what the capacity of that new cigar lounge is?
I don't know. I do know that they just got it in in terms of the parking requirements on the site.
I didn't think they had enough parking.
They barely, they barely got it in there because it's based on, we based it on the seats. And they're going to have lounge chair, lounge couches around several different TVs, basically. And so, the capacity is going to be limited to only those people that can have a seat.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I don't know, even with just Big Boys being open, the people that work at Big Boys use that parking lot, and.
The rear one.
It didn't seem like there was enough parking for hardly anybody to use that as a lounge. And I can see them parking up and down Harrison.
And there was some issues with that, that property owner getting a tenant in that space because everybody wanted it to be a banquet hall, and everybody wanted it to have like a hundred or two hundred people in there. And we just told them, your parking doesn't necessitate that, you have, you have to come up with a parking solution. And eventually, he came, he had a young gentleman that's going to be, that's still opening the business, and he says, you know, all I need is people sitting in the seats. That's all he needs, so.
Well, yeah, it probably needs to be uh, updated. I can see that some of the language could be clarified a little bit. If, if we just use some of the state definitions, that might be helpful. And the lighting ordinance, uh, I know some places have blur issues. Do, what did you wanna do with this?
Mainly the idea would be to look at creating um, minimum and maximum light levels on a site.
Using a photometric plan?
Using a photometric plan. Currently, our ordinance is all about the height requirements, and then just making sure the fixtures are shielded, which is good. Um, but even, you know, I would like to add specific language and not, not even using angled brackets on fixtures, cause like, for example, if you look at the checkers that went in, their site plan shows them being shielded and directed downward and, and that sort of thing, but then he's got angled lights on there. I'm going back and forth and him telling him he's gotta angle those down. So I think, just taking a look at the idea of, and also exploring the idea of a m- minimum, because as some people have commented, you're, if you're in other adjacent community to the city, you know, seems kind of, you know, vibrant or some activity going on, but once you cross in the Garden City, sometimes it feels like, there's like-
Gets dark.
It gets really dark, so. Right, it's gonna turn out all the lights. And to, you know, I understand the idea of um, property owners wanting to be conscious of their bills, but with LED technology, and everybody's putting in LED lights now, they save a tremendous amount of money, and if we just had a minimum light level at the parking lot, I think that would be something that could, you know, at least people have, be able to see where they're going.
Well, we, we use all standards when we approve a new site plan.
We, but we technically don't have, we do have, we have the shielding and the directed downward, but technically, we don't have a requirement that they maintain a minimum light level at all times.
I, I thought I remembered us requiring certain level of lighting on the walkways and but maybe not. And we have asked for photometric plans in the past, I know.
We do have an intensity and a minimum. Um, the one thing we don't require is that it's maintained at all times, and that sort of thing. So that'd be like a little tweak that might just be necessary to. Because our lighting arts has been effective, but, you know.
Okay, uh, well, about these items, uh, do we have a priority for one in particular we'd like to see what that first? I think maybe the one that would have immediate impact and might be easy to do would be number one. The office and uh, changing that to C one and uh, mixed use district, or making that uh, a permitted use in C one. That would be easy to, well, to make that change, so. Are there alerts that you'd like to see as a priority on this list, or are they all the same?
About the same level, uh, for me.
Unless you got a lot of smoke shops that wanna come in here, so.
Yeah, is there, is there quite a bit of interest? I know that this is-
I would say there's quite a bit of interest.
And that should be number two.
Yeah, that's probably one that we need to be careful with.
And then I think five should be next, the, the lighting issue. Cause if you're gonna get mixed use coming in, then you gotta address the lighting issue.
Yeah, that's true. If we're gonna have residences in a commercial use, we, we need to have the area well-wet, so it's not hazardous. But those, those three, I think probably, uh, maybe should be the first ones that we look at.
Sounds good.
Next item is Commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters.
No, I don't.
No, hopefully.
Nope, ain't that tonight.
I wasn't at the last meeting when you updated everybody on all of the projects. Is there, is there any of those projects that are going ahead that we know of, or are they all stalled?
So, um, with regards to LA Fitness, we really haven't heard from them. They're always saying once restrictions are lifted, we'll move forward. Evidently, uh, once again, I, I don't understand the logic, but that's in theory their choice. Some other things that are ongoing, um, the Shell gas station is being refurbished. They're going with, uh, they have, I don't know if you saw, but there's a little pile of bricks out in front, so they are gonna go with a nice darker color brick on the front.
It was a plum, almost a plum-colored brick. It's, it's a darker brick.
So it'll look pretty nice. Um, and they're dealing, and they, yeah, so they're moving forward. Some other recent ones that were approved in the past, but have extensions that are coming forward, three-two-three-three-zero Ford, even though it's called Ford, it's the number one, it's our first approved commercial marijuana, marijuana facility, uh, that's on Hubbard, actually. Or number three, I should say, the large, large facility. They've been dealing with environmental remediation issues, so that's why they haven't, you haven't seen any construction. They've been doing everything on the inside. They've had, actually had to deal with the EPA to clean up the site. They're almost complete with that. They just submitted a minor modification to the site plan. They just wanna flip the parking a little bit on the uh, east side of the building. Um, so in theory, they'll be coming soon with uh, construction plans. Similarly, with the medical marijuana facility on Industrial Drive, they just submitted some revised engineering plans because they're, they wanted to do the calculations on the um, stormwater and that sort of thing. So they, they eliminated the driveway in front of the building. But everything else is exactly the same, so they're going to be uh, submitting detailed construction plans for that. What else? Oh, approved administratively, um, two-eight-three-three-three Ford Road, which is the Burger King, right at Harrison and Ford. They're gonna refurbish the facade of the building. So since it's just a facade refurbishment, we approved them administratively. They're also gonna be changing that driveway into a tandem driveway, double drive. So that'll help with the stacking issues that have been there in the past.
They won't have two on Ford Road then?
Uh, it's gonna be two there, but it's gonna, but I think they're gonna have enough stacking distance and enough, and because it's two, the, the, the line will be half as long in theory. I'll admit, I haven't dri- driven past during dinnertime, but I imagine it's probably, especially lately, it's been kinda like all our other drive-throughs, getting pretty, pretty long in, long in the tooth. So they'll be refurbishing that site and um, think of another, oh, and you'll be uh, seeing, provided the applicant submits their uh, site plan in time at Warren and, oh my gosh, is it Harrison? No. Upon Warren, there's a C one piece of property that they're gonna be proposing a, a gym. So it'll be a small gym, like a seven thousand square foot gym. Uh, yes, at Warren and Harrison. So provided they submit their site plan by the deadline, you'll be seeing that at your next meeting.
Is that a new building?
Brand-new building, brand-new construction. I can't remember what was there in the past, because it was before my time. So that's it. There, uh, it would be a brand-new building, and actually putting it up close to the road with a nice landscaping in front of it, and the parking in the rear. So it looks very nice conceptually. So we'll see, once again, as long as they provide their site plan. And uh, yeah.
Okay, Brian, did you have anything?
Nope, nothing.
Do you have anything else, Mary?
Nope.
Uh, next regular meeting is Thursday, June tenth, twenty-twenty-one. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.